To the Provo Municipal Council meeting, it is Tuesday, January 28th at 5:30 PM and we'll call this meeting to order. Our council members present tonight are Councilmember McKay, Councillor Handley, Councillor Whipple, Councillor Garrett, Councillor Christensen, Councillor Bogdan will join us shortly, as will Councillor Hoban. We also welcome Mayor Kafusi. Our opening prayer this evening will be offered by Justin Jones, who is an MPA student from Portland, Oregon. Then we will have the pledge, will be led in the pledge by George Handley.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councillor Handley, and thank you, Justin. As indicated on the screen, required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items this evening prior to council action. After each item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. Please note that items five and six on the agenda are to be continued to a future meeting. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will be taken following the presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda, but are limited to topics regarding municipal business or within municipal council purview. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those who wish to comment are invited to approach the podium. Those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to comment. The chair may choose to alternate between in-person and online commenters. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. You will have two minutes to speak. We'll now open the meeting for public comment. Any online commenters, Malia? We can go ahead and take that comment now. If you're online, please go ahead, unmute your phone, and you can make your comment now. They, they're, they're no longer. Okay, very good. If not, then we'll close public comment at this time and move to the first item on our agenda, which is an implied motion on a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a loan from the State Infrastructure Bank for the Provo Airport. This will be presented to us by Brian Torgerson, the airport director.
So as, as indicated, you are. As we discussed, any times we are in the process of moving along from airport expansion project, overloading growth, Provo Airport, one of those priority projects, if the expansion on the bottom of the screen there, number six point two. This project is under design. It's stated that the time I have to prepare for it in the next few weeks, that did be delivered exactly where it is upon that around March first. It's funding for this stage of the expansion across the eleven to nineteen million in the federal organization penetration. They have, we received award from the outside association and most people create lots of money for one of the questions to take off is this ready for payment desk? So.
Thank you. Is that better? So about a year and a half ago, we entered a contract with a, with a dirt work contractor to place engineered fill and then pile dirt on top of that engineered fill and let it sit as is standard at the airport to support the weight of the future concrete that's going there. So all of the area in blue and green is, is ready for that construction settlement has occurred and we'll be moving forward with final pavement construction. In order to do that, we mentioned that 16.9 million was awarded from MAG. That funding is not available until 2028. And so that necessitates an interim funding loan in order for us to move forward with that construction, given the fact that we have no additional space for aircraft at the, at the airport at this time. That, that loan from, from the State Infrastructure Bank loan is in the amount of 14.5 million. And you see, there's a difference between the loan amount and the award amount from MAG. That anticipates that interest burden that will all be paid back by those MAG funds. Again, this, this construction is anticipated to begin as soon as possible, as soon as weather warms up and ground ceases to freeze. So. Think that's, oh, so, so timing of the funding, again, we have the option, UDOT has given us the option of doing one balloon payment, which helps us in the execution of the expansion project, which we will do as soon as that MAG funding has been received, a great interest rate at 3.08. So we're, we're pretty excited about this opportunity to get things rolling. With that, I'll take any questions regarding the loan or the anticipated expansion of the terminal apron.
Any questions for Mr. Torgerson? Yes, councillor.
I know it was helpful for me to learn that even MAGs pay the interest, like Provo City isn't paying any of this, even by getting a loan, we're not paying the interest part of it.
Correct.
And costs have been increasing so much that we save a lot doing it now.
Absolutely.
Councillor Christensen?
And maybe goes without saying that the ability to get funding like this, so that citizens in Provo aren't paying for it, but enjoying the benefit is remarkable. Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you, Brian. This item has been noticed for public comment. If there are any who would like to make a comment related to this issue, you can step to the podium at this time. If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to the council for any discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Well, it's an implied motion, so if there are no substitutions, we can just move with this. I don't want to change it. I think this is great as it is.
Thank you, Councillor Whipple. Yes, so the emotion is the implied motion, and we'll go ahead and call for a, a vote at this time. Councillor Bogdan?
Yes.
Councillor Christensen?
Yes.
Councillor Garrett? Yes. Councillor Handley?
Yes.
Councillor Hoban?
Yes.
Councillor McKay?
Yes.
And Councillor Whipple?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That motion passes seven to zero. Next, we'll address an implied motion on an ordinance updating and clarifying standards related to noise. And this item will be presented by one of our policy analysts, Michael Sanders.
Okay. Thank you, council. Kevin, could you please pull up the exhibit A of this? All right, thanks. All right. So council, this is just a follow-up from our, from our December 17th work meeting of last year, where the council directed us to include some specific exemptions related to stadiums and include some more clarifications to the proposed noise ordinance. So there has been some changes in the language since the last time we talked about this, and I'll just go over them quickly. So in section two, could you scroll down, Kevin, or there we go. Let's see if I can do it. This might be better. Okay, so what has changed in, right here at the top of this page, section two, these are the noise exemptions. We added subsection B and C. Are you able to see that on your screen here? Subsections B and C, these are related to the noise at, related to stadium. So subsection B states noise from official inner school athletic competitions taking place at a sports venue designed for such competitions and located on the property of an educational institution. They're exempt from the noise ordinance. So this would cover all of the football games and any other inner, inner school competitions taking place. And then subsection C, I won't read the whole thing, but that covers all of the other, quote, other activities taking place at the stadium. They are allowed to be exempt from the noise ordinance between the hours of seven and 10, as long as they're conducted in a manner consistent with the purposes of the stadium. And if they go past 10, they're required to obtain a permit from the mayor's office. We've also added some additional exemptions in subsection two. In G and H, the first one is noise from equipment used to remove snow and ice from roads and walkways. And in H is noise from landscaping equipment operating between the hours of seven and 10. So those are proposed to be exempt as well. We also, in accordance with direction in subsection three of the noise limits paragraph, there was a line at the end there referencing a 10-minute sound break if the indoor noise meets or exceeds 105 decibels. We got rid of that 10-minute sound break. Another thing you'll notice is in the language, we removed all of the references to ambient noise. If you remember, last time we were referencing ambient noise throughout the ordinance, but we've been awaiting feedback from the police department informations and information services regarding the feasibility of their phone-based apps to be able to measure ambient noise. And they have not gotten any response back to us yet. So just to avoid delaying the ordinance's passage, we just deleted all the references. They're temporarily, they're temporarily removed. And if we do get confirmation that their apps can measure ambient noise, we can bring back an amendment to add that in. This item was presented to the Neighborhood One District Board and some general comments. Their main concern about the ordinance was that they would like a way to be notified whenever there is a special exemption. They just would, they just believe that there's a lack of a notification system in here. And also, there were general concerns with regarding the exemption power of the mayor. But that's all I have.
What questions do we have for Michael, council? Councilmember Whipple?
Yeah, I'm wondering why we need to have an exemption for landscaping equipment when there's a lot of landscaping equipment that's quiet. Like you don't have, like there are quietly blowers and loudly blowers. So why would we, why would we exempt that if it's something that can be accomplished quietly?
I don't have a diplomatic answer for that. Let's see if Brian can do it.
Well, I, my answer is even worse than Michael's. I was gonna say, I think that's a question for you. I, I don't, that's a policy decision for you to consider. This was part of the proposal for what was coming in. It wasn't something that was discussed. This actually wasn't something that the committee suggested. It was something I think that came as part of BYU's proposal because of the amount of that activity that they engage in. We added it, but if you don't like it, you can change it or delete it.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Brian.
Councilmember?
I, McKay, I do have a concern with the equipment too. Especially the hours, like, I mean, it is loud. And even seven is early. I mean, you still have kids sleeping. I mean, eight seems at least more decent or, and why 10:00 PM? It just seems like a huge window.
Yeah, the window we put in there was just to make it consistent with the table, but we can definitely change it.
I'd be more open to that being a smaller window.
Specifically related to the landscaping equipment. Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, I would just second that. I love my neighbors, but I do not like their noisy machines, you know, that, that, you know, for leaves and everything else. So I think the 10:00 PM is out of line. That should be much shorter. So I would agree.
Councilmember Bogdan?
Michael, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions.
I'm ready.
Okay, I gave you a heads up. So most of the concerns that, at least I thought that came in through Open City Hall had to do with the base noise. So can you explain why we're excluding base noise here?
Yes, definitely can. So the short answer is that being able to measure base is very difficult. You do have to have lots of specialized equipment. And if you're able to find specialized equipment to somehow measure it, there's no real guidance to implement standards to what is too much base. After reviewing 31 noise ordinances over through the state, we have only found one instance of an ordinance mentioning base from our neighbors to the north, Orem. They also commented, commented to us that they have never used that provision in their ordinance to enforce their noise ordinance. And while base can be very disruptive, I think that if the base that, the, the noise related to the base can still qualify as a violation of this ordinance due to the section 9.06.030 here in, in our ordinance here, noise measurements at the top there, the first couple pair, the sentences, "Sound level measurements, though generally preferred, are not required to demonstrate a violation of this chapter. If sufficient evidence or testimony proves the existence of a disturbance, or if, if testimony proves the existence of a disturbance or public nuisance." So in essence, if someone is being bothered by the base and they're able to prove that they're causing a reasonable disturbance, then they, they could be found in violation.
Thank you. Some of the emails that we've been getting, especially around the stadium, have to do with how is that process done for them to get an exemption, for them to get, to be able to play a concert past 10 o'clock or before seven in the morning?
Right, specifically the mayoral exemptions. Okay, yeah, so the exemptions is, it's just simply in the code that they must obtain a written permit issued by the mayor or the mayor's designate. The code does not outline what that process is. So that's an administrative process. So I don't know, Mr. Henderson, do you have a comment on what the process currently is?
We have seen it come through the special event process quite often. And when they ask for noise ordinance, then it is forwarded up to our area to get the specifics on it and then make a decision on that.
So it's done through the mayor's office then?
Yes.
Okay. And then I, can we point out that section in the exemptions, we talked about it a little bit, where I know there were concerns that they're gonna go ahead and play loud music as they were cleaning the stadium. And we talked about how in this noise ordinance, they cannot do that.
Right. So cleaning the stadium, I do not believe would be a sufficient reason to play music from the PA system, because the subsection B there says that they're only allowed to go as late as they want with the noise when it is an official inner school athletic competition. If it's something like a cleanup, it would fall into the subsection C there, where it specifically says including the PA system cannot be used past 10:00 PM unless there's a permit from the mayor. So if they really want to play music while they're cleaning up the stadium after the big win, they're gonna have to get a permit.
Or prior to 7:00 AM, right? So if they wanted Or prior to 7am, right? So if they wanted to, I don't know, go practice with the band before it's six o'clock in the morning, that's not going to be allowed without a permit.
Yep, without a permit.
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Henderson, would you mind commenting to that? So an exemption then is requested from the mayor's office. And, and we have received significant input from neighbors relative to post game activities or early morning. And Michael says unless an exemption is granted. But would you see clarifying that in the permit that you issue, the exemption you issue? That they're sensitive to post game music or noise or early morning noise?
I see these changes and great work with the group on these changes, providing that level of clarity that we need. And I think if there was a request to be able to go past that normal time with the event with loud music for cleanup, obviously the mayor's office as the designee right now for that would have a concern with that and probably would not approve that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Michael? This item was also noticed for public comment, so we'd invite any who are here that would like to speak to this issue to approach the podium at this time.
Is this working now?
Yes.
Good. Gonghe Fatoy. It is Chinese New Year this week, wishing you well.
And could you state your name and city of residence, Lynn?
I have three minutes because I am a delegate to the district one executive board. Thank you. So I appreciate some of the clarification that Michael has done. I was also very interested that you didn't want lawn noises at seven in the morning. We that live in the Pleasant View neighborhood, we've had the national anthem at six and seven on a holiday, which is really not, not fun. So if you're open to considering narrowing that time, we would certainly vote for that. And, and second the motion if you are interested in that. I'm specifically interested where we just were 9.06.05, which is about the exemptions. It hasn't been clear how a person would apply for these, what would be required. I mean, it does say the specific nature of an event. The maximum allowable decibels, the duration and so forth. But that seems awfully limited as to what the person requesting would need to provide. And I haven't, I mean, Scott was just mentioning in passing that we're not aware at all of what the process is. What are the, what's the evaluation criteria? How, how is an exemption granted and how is it? You know, not, not granted. So we'd really like more information about that in the ordinance. It seems to me that that would be very helpful. I've heard from a lot of members of our neighborhood who this has been a thorn in their side for years. So they were really hoping that this noise ordinance will help things. But, oh, I thought you were bringing up 9.06.05. Can we see that again? Oh, okay. Are you counselors able to see that?
We can see it too. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so one thing that we're concerned about is actually I don't see it in this version where oh, no, it's oh, here it is. Yes, thank you. That's it. Michael, thank you. That an exemption, they may be exempt from some or all of the noise restrictions. Like I'm having trouble conceiving what sort of request would be exempt from all of the noise restrictions. It seems to me perhaps some. But I'm very surprised to see that all is suggested as a possibility. And I'm hoping that.
Thank you, Lynn. We appreciate your comment and certainly your service in the neighborhood leadership. Thank you. Other public comments? We have an online comment. Go ahead. If you can hear me, go ahead and unmute your phone and you can make your public comment.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Warren Bodley. I'm just a resident of District Five. And I just wanted to express some concern about how the proposed like noise ordinance seems to kind of unfairly target students. I just wanted to say kind of like Provo is a college town. It's, you know, it's kind of like a clear thing. BYU is a big deal. As long as, as well as like the other universities. Provo is a college town shaped by the presence of students make up like a massive percent of its population. This ordinance feels like it kind of is rejecting what makes a college town unique, what makes a college experience like a vibrant and worthwhile experience. The ability for students to gather, to celebrate and build community during this kind of really important stage of our life seems to be kind of threatened. Because the council showed that it recognizes the college town identity by making exemptions for stadium events. But then why does that have to stop at the kind of stadium gates? If you can celebrate sports as a communal experience, shouldn't we also be able to value students coming together? You know, in their own homes and doll styles past, you know, just like 10 o'clock. You know, I just think that it's passing the ordinance that disproportionately strict students gathering sends a message that one group's way of life is prioritized over the other. And I think that's kind of a theme that runs through a lot of what's been going on with the council. I just hear a lot of emphasis being placed on homeowners without kind of bringing to perspective that so much of Provo is our, our students, you know, I was looking at the budget and it seems that the majority of the revenue is made of by sales tax. And I think it's, I mean, like, I'm not an economist, but it seems pretty obvious that the students are going to be main contributors, contributors to this, to this revenue. We are the ones that are buying things. We're the ones spending money like at all these stores, all these restaurants. We are the ones that are kind of supporting all these local businesses. That I do not think would be able to, would be able to thrive without the students at BYU. And, and so I think it's just like the community is strongest when it respects and balances the diverse needs of all its residents. And so, so like, we need to go forward, like understand this ordinance. Keeps being cared back for, you know, just for neighbors and for homeowners, but also like realize like there needs to be like some
Thank you, Warren. We appreciate your comment. Sorry, it's a two minute limit. But we heard and understand your, your input and feedback. And thank you for your email message too. Any other public comment? Yes.
Eric Davis from Brigham Young University, General Counsel's Office. And it was mentioned earlier that we had an opportunity to comment on this ordinance, which we very much appreciated. And there were also some questions about some of the suggestions we had, including the landscaping. And it just occurred to us as we were reviewing the ordinance that the way that it's written, that the noise levels are measured at the boundary of the property. Anytime you have to trim or edge landscaping, you're likely to over, to exceed the ordinance like noise limits. And so there has, there, there needs to be some sort of accounting for that presumably. It makes sense that there'd be reasonable time limits put on that. Nobody needs to be trimming the verge at three in the morning. And you can certainly understand that there should be some a balance there right between those kinds of activities. Noise, uh, snow removal is a little bit different. Sometimes you don't get to choose when that has to be done. The other comments that I had, the, I, I appreciate the, the student comment. I think that the city council is going to have to balance, obviously, the, the noisy activities that are going to occur at a college town and the needs of residents who need to have sleep and some peace as well. And so it seems like this ordinance is a good effort at balancing that. And certainly you can play with the time limitations in that and, and make, find those that make the most sense for everybody. But the university can certainly can find this louder activities to, to certain time limitations. Some things like sporting events, we don't have a lot of choice about though. And those get scheduled by conferences and networks and things. But the other things, we're happy to work with the city and try to make it reasonable for everybody.
Thank you, Eric. Eric, do you anticipate that with regard to landscaping equipment? That could be addressed between the hours of 7am and 10pm? Or are you saying that sometimes they would need to initiate that even before 7am?
That's not the kind of thing that we'd be looking for a permit to exceed those time limits. There's enough property that needs to be enough lawns need to be mowed that aren't most close to our neighbors.
Okay.
We can save those neighbor knowing mowing times for.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
But were you saying that even during the day, you're going to exceed the decibel levels? You could exceed the decibel levels that are permitted during the day, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that's unavoidable if you have to trim the, the grass near a neighbor's house.
Right.
It's hard to do that.
Basically, what you're saying is that the decibel levels aren't high enough to account for accommodate certain, you know, lawn care at, at any point.
Right, because if you're measuring at the property boundary, as long as you, if you've got to run a lawnmower up and back and forth along the boundary of your property, you're going to exceed it.
Which is why they proposed the exemption, because the exemption would address that.
Council member Handley.
Yeah, for clarification, I mean, Eric knows this, but I live right behind Wyemount. And the noise level exceeds the 75 decibels in just stepping outside, just opening up my back door. And it's not because of trimming, it's because of leaf blowing. It's the leaf blowers in the fall that'll go every single week for many hours in the morning. And it's unlivable in terms of the neighborhood proximate to the Wyemount, but it's the Wyemount residents that I actually feel the most sorry for because they're the ones who have little children. And they're in school, they're trying to study. I can't work at home when that's going on. It's so loud inside my house. So I, I don't think the, the issue of trimming would actually be the thing that would drive the the noise that loud unless it's, because it's usually the, the I've observed this for years, but it's usually the number of machines that are going all at once that actually creates that really high level. And it's not all the time. It's usually during the, the leaf blowing season. So it seems to me that I don't, I don't know of any reason why I can't, well, I can't imagine that, that landscape equipment would typically get anywhere near 70 decibels. But I do think there's probably a tendency for that to happen with leaf blowing. So I, I, and, and I do think that's a problem. Otherwise, I don't think it's an issue. I mean, because frankly, if you started, I mean, it has actually awakened me in the morning at seven in the morning. But, but it's more the issue of, you know, like, again, I'm thinking of those parents with young children that if they're, who knows when their nap times are. So it, it, it's not like we could time it around everybody's family schedule. I think it's just a matter of figuring out if, if, if there's certain instruments like leaf blowers that they know if they rotated them through. So it's not 17 of them blowing all at once and the decibel level goes way high. And they spread it out over the course of the day or the week. I don't know. It just seems like maybe there's some way to reasonably do that.
I'm sure there is. And I think this, I think this ordinance, as it's written, goes at least some way towards addressing that, right? It's saying if you're going to do that and it's going to affect your neighbors, then you need to confine those kinds of activities to certain hours of the day. There's nothing in, as far as the residents on campus. Because the, the noise is measured at the boundary of the, of the property, I'm not sure that it addresses that for, for our own residents, our own.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would push back a little that the, I mean, right now, as it's written, noise from landscaping equipment is exempted. So there's no, there's no limit to how loud they could be between 7am and 10pm. That's what the, that's what BYU is asking. And I'm just thinking there's probably a middle ground somewhere where we're not saying you can't use landscaping equipment between 7 am and 10pm. You could, but if the decibel level is going to be over the normal the, the, whatever it is, 70 or 75 that we have in the city, is there, is there some?
Yeah, maybe it shouldn't be unlimited, right?
Right.
It's like, okay, maybe you can go 10 decibels over or yeah, that makes sense. And that's not, that's not unreasonable at all.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Eric. Is there any additional public comment on this item? If not, we'll close public comment and bring this item back to council for any additional discussion. Council member Whipple.
Yeah, there, there are quieter landscaping equipment options. When we switched to an electric lawnmower, I'd go out to yell at my kid to mow the lawn and realize he was already mowing the lawn. It was just so much quieter that I didn't hear that he was doing it. There can be leaf blowers, like electric leaf blowers that can be much quieter by more than 20 decibels than the gas powered leaf blowers. And do you know what's super quiet is a rake? No noise whatsoever. So I really, I don't see the need for a full day landscape exemption when there are tools that can do the work without creating the, the noise nuisance. That's my first point. The second one is to speak to my little public commenter from my district. And we also got an email about this, about paying attention to the students. So I was a BYU student. I remember living just south of campus. And this is so frustrating when the guys in the little house next door would do a super loud party. I, as a student, hated that. It was so frustrating. I'm really grateful that we have BYU, which is like the number one stone cold sober school. Because we don't have super loud frat parties or those disturbances that often make community or college communities really unlivable. Because we have this kind of, of environment, we can have our students integrated into our neighborhoods and it works pretty well. And I will say that as a student, I think my worst noise experience was we lived in a little house next to one of the BYU parking lots. And one night a car alarm was going off all night long. And Provo police wouldn't do anything because it was on private property. We couldn't get anyone from BYU to do anything because it was somebody's vehicle. It was terrible. So I see a noise ordinance that makes sense, that's enforceable as something that benefits our student community as much as it does the people who are no longer or never have been students in our community. I'm also because this landscaping exemption wasn't in what we had discussed before. I would prefer just to completely strip out that 2H exemption regarding the landscaping equipment. I think they should have to comply with the same chart as all of the other noise with the different noise levels for the daytime and the evening. And I believe that such a thing is feasible with the technology and the equipment that's available.
Thank you. Other comment? Council member, council member McKay.
Thank you for addressing the what was it Becky?
Base.
Ah, yes, that, but also the cleanup and that. I think how this has gotten out of control is that BYU has increased what they've done over the years. They've done more and more and more. And I think the random movies and the lights and the noise, it's really frustrating, right? People expect the games and the games are awesome and they should be as loud as possible and go nuts on them. But we don't need to go nuts at the cleanup. We don't need to do a bunch of private movies. We don't, you know, there, there needs to be a balance. So I'm glad to hear that the, after the cleanup will be exempted. That was a huge issue with Pleasant View neighborhood and that makes sense, both with the lights and the noise. I don't think the, I don't think the lawn care should be exempted. One of the awesome things. One of the awesome things about BYU is that they do keep up their stuff and they keep it beautifully, and they take care of their grounds and their landscaping and where we have a lot of landlords that don't do that, I'm really grateful for that. I do think there is an efficiency and an expense and other things when we talk about completely changing the way that they do things. I think limited time, the time does make sense. You know, maybe it doesn't have the same exemption as everything else, seven to ten, maybe it goes eight to eight or something. I thought that would be something I'd be game for, but I think that they have a good system and I don't know if we're totally at I've I've talked to landscapers about it, and they say it's it's too much, with as much as BYU does, works their machines, I don't think electrical is the way to go yet. But and I and I think, or I hope that BYU has gotten the message somewhat on, you know, the citizen feedback and what they've heard.
Thank you, Catrice. Councilmember Hoban?
Just to clarify, so you were saying you don't think BYU should have an exemption for landscaping?
I think they sh- I I don't think it should be pulled, they're, what am I saying? I think they should have an exemption, but we can cut the time down like eight to eight. I don't think them going electrical is feasible or makes sense at this time.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
I I would just want to note that the exemption is not written that's just for BYU landscaping, it says all landscaping equipment would be exempted, so your neighbor or the school or whoever it is that's making that noise.
I think that's appropriate.
Okay, and just a note on noise levels, I just looked it up. According to Yale, they have a nice fun little table for me right here, a normal conversation level tone is about sixty, seventy decibels, seventy-five decibels is about this sound level of vacuum cleaner. A power mower, they say it's a hundred and seven decibels, so if you're running your gas-powered lawnmower, hundred and seven decibels, so.
And I just add on that I've had my meter running over here during the conversation, we've averaged seventy and gone as high as ninety in this conversation.
Thank you, Brian.
Any other comment? Okay, then. I'm sorry, a public comment is closed, yeah, thank you. Then I will invite a, this is an implied motion, so I'll call for a vote at this time. Or ask if or ask, or if there's a substitute motion, well.
I I'm not sure I know what motion to make exactly, I mean, I was suggesting I was suggesting that that the landscaping equipment issue, I think, is actually only pertains to certain times of the year and certain technologies that are needed at certain times, and I think it's I think it's reasonable to ask some moderation on that without, I mean, I I know, I know for a fact that BYU is interested in transitioning to electric. I know that's a hard transition to make, and I know that they have a longer-term plan to make that transition. Which is partly why I was a little surprised to even see this request for an exemption. I I don't I I don't see any reason why we can't expect reasonable decibel levels during the day using that equipment around residential areas. And I think there are probably some ways that that they could accommodate that in a reasonable way. So I would, I would second Counselor Whipple's interest in having that removed with the understanding that they, you know, BYU can try to be reasonable on that and and find find some solutions that are more accommodating of of the residents. So I guess that's, I'm inching toward that as my opinion on this. If we're looking at an amendment to the implied motion.
Councilmember McKay?
Well, doesn't that mean that you could do no landscaping ever?
No, no, not at all, why would it?
Well, he's saying, our our conversations are coming in at ninety right now, you know what I mean?
No, yeah, that, well, that's a little bit misleading, I mean, if you're, if you're right next to a lawnmower, you can't have a conversation with with somebody, but if you're a hundred feet away or you're two hundred feet away, it's a different story. If there are fifteen leaf blowers going, I can, all I can tell you is I've I've recorded it on my backyard. Because I was curious, I was like, wow, that is really loud, I wonder what our city limit is, and I was like, oh, it's over our city limit. It is, so it's, it's, we've, we may not like what our current city limit is, but what I'm, I they they do landscaping work all the time, but it's only certain times of year when they're using all the leaf blowers all at once that where I've noticed it going over. And so that's all I'm saying, I mean, if you, if you have a hedger coming along, yeah, if I'm standing right next to the hedger, I'm not going to hear very well, but it's not going to affect somebody's quality of life if if one hedge machine is going or one one lawnmower is going.
And and I think that's, that's a totally valid philosophical and policy standpoint. I don't know that our ordinance is currently written to accommodate what you're suggesting in this sense. Now, this came up, we're, we're talking about BYU because BYU was the one that suggested it. It doesn't apply, it's not written in any way so that it applies only to BYU. I don't know, I don't know if Michael has any data, I don't even if we leave it out, I don't know that, I have a big fear that there's going to be a flood of calls to the police about neighbors mowing their lawns, because I don't think we've had that in the past.
Well, it's our current law, isn't it? I mean, our current law says you can't have noise above seventy-five decibels.
Right, and but it's happening all the time, we're just not getting complaints about it.
But that's my point, landscaping is going on right now, no problem.
Right, well, I don't know, do you know if we've had any calls?
So I have, look, there is thousands and thousands and thousands of calls, and we did not search specifically for landscaping, but they're definitely not the number-one complaint. The number-one is parties, and after that, the stadium, probably.
But but what I'm trying to say, Counselor Handley, I'm trying to agree with your last point, I I don't know that it causes me a lot of concern because I don't know that it's been a problem in the past, but I do want to, I just wanted to make clear, because it's been some of the discussion that the councillors have been having amongst ourselves, that from a technical standpoint, if we just take it out, every person who runs a lawnmower around the edge of their property is going to be in violation at the moment that they're running the lawnmower around the edge of their property. I don't know that that's a concern, because I don't know that people are going to complain about that. But just because that was a point of conversation, I wanted to make clear that that is the case, if we just strip it out.
Councilmember Whipple?
Yeah, well, given that it's not in the current ordinance, I I don't see that stripping it out is a significant change. So also, we took out the the loud birds and fowls that was in the current ordinance. Which is kind of funny. In any case, I I would like to make a motion that we just remove that subparagraph two-H for the landscaping equipment because that hasn't been a problem with the current ordinance, and I don't see the need to create that exemption now.
Is there a second to Councilmember Rachel's substitute motion?
It's nine oh-six oh-five oh-two H.
Right there.
So just to remove that that line.
And basically to say that they're not, this would not be an exempt use.
Right, because right now, there's no such exemption in the current code, and I don't see a need to add it.
I would second that.
So you're seconding Councilmember Whipple's substitute motion. Any comment or council input or discussion? Councilmember McKay?
And so I was just saying a motion to take it out. If, as a substitute motion, should it be to adopt this with that change, or just do what?
No, and under our council rules, we need to pass the motion to remove it first. Then if that motion passes, the implied motion would then be to pass the motion as amended with that, so you'd have to do two votes.
Thanks for helping us understand, Roberts.
Okay, thank you. So first, a comment from Councilmember McKay.
We spent a lot of time on this, and I want this taken seriously, right? And I think us doing something that we know that many hundreds of businesses and BYU and homeowners are going to be in violation of is silly. We have a lot of landscaping companies that'll be dramatically hurt, that can't afford to go to electric, or it's not the the best business model right now. And I want BYU to take this seriously, I want them to take it seriously to be, to be more considerate of their neighbors and to do better after their games and with the movie nights and stuff like that, and so putting something together that they know they're going to be in violation of, and asking them to disobey that part of the law, but keep the other part of the law isn't good faith, in my opinion. I would be for changing the noise from landscaping equipment operating between eight and eight. But otherwise, I'll keep it in as is.
Any other comment? Okay, first, we'll vote on the motion made by Rachel and seconded by Craig. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett? No. Councilmember Handley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoban?
We're moving, we're, we're to remove the exemption. So I don't want to remove the exemption, but I I was supportive of a eight to eight.
That will, that would be the next.
Okay, no.
Councilmember McKay?
No.
Councilmember Whipple?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogdan?
No.
So that motion fails by a vote of five to two.
Okay, I'd like to make a substitute motion to change.
The vote was four to three.
Thank you. By a vote of four to three, the motion fails, thank you.
Chair Garrett, I'll make a substitute motion to just change it, noise from landscape equipment operating between eight AM and eight PM.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
A second by Councilmember Bogdan, any discussion? I'll call for a vote. Councilmember Garrett, yes. Councilmember Handley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoban?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero. We now have an implied motion, which is the resolution authorizing the, I'm sorry, updating and clarifying standards related to noise with the
As a With the already-approved amendment.
The already-approved amendment, thank you. I'll call for a vote on that item. Councilmember Hoban?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero, thank you.
Thank you, council, just a note, this has been in the works since December of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you for all your work, Michael. We'll move now to an implied motion on an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at five seventy-seven east, four hundred south from the one-family residential R-one-six zone to the low-density residential LDR zone. In the Mazur neighborhood, this item will be presented by Mary Barnes.
Thank you. All right, you guys saw this application in work session earlier today, but I wanted to just give a little more of a comprehensive look at it during council meeting. So the property owner, Daniel Franco, who's here tonight, is proposing a rezone on his property here from R-one-six to LDR. Originally, this rezone application was proposed in order to build two townhomes in the backyard of the existing single-family home in the lot, bringing the total units of the, on the property to three. On September fourth, this concept plan and the rezone went before the neighborhood meeting and was met with general support. On November thirteenth, it went before the planning commission, who approved the concept plan and recommended approval for the rezone. At the December third council meeting, the city council did direct the applicant to change the concept plan and come back with a concept plan that would reduce the amount of density on the parcel and provide a larger opportunity for you for homeownership. So the applicant is now proposing, is coming back now and proposing this updated concept plan showing a single, single-family home. Uh, yeah, a single-family home in the backyard instead of that two-town home layout. Just to let you know, the LDR, an LDR rezone is needed for this parcel because in order to make something like this work, because another single-family home would not be permitted in the R-one-six zone. Similarly, this lot would not qualify for a flag lot in the R-one-six zone, which is why he's asking for this LDR rezone. Similar things have been done in the neighborhood, we went over this in December, but there is a property just to the north that has two single-family homes in the backyard of an existing single-family home. There's a project to the south that has a triplex in the backyard of a single-family home, and there is multifamily uses in the area as well. And then just to, because there was a question on this in work session. I just wanted to quickly go over the process that the applicant will have to go through in the future if this rezone is approved tonight. So the applicant will have to apply for project plan approval with staff, which will include all civil plans, landscaping plans, architectural plans, the whole set to really design this to make sure it meets LDR requirements and our landscaping requirements that will go before planning commission for approval. They'll also have to provide a final subdivision plot that includes the HOA bylaws and CCNRs for the type of subdivision plot they'll be going for, which is a subdivision plot that creates common common area and subdivides those two homes from each other. And then a building permit will also have to be applied for to build the home. Staff does recommend approval on this application. It makes sense in the area, given the different uses that are surrounding the property. And the property owner will be able to add housing supply to the neighborhood specifically in the form of single-family housing, which is a stated goal in the general plan. Any questions for me on that?
Any questions for Mary? Thank you, Mary.
Perfect, thank you.
This item is available for public comment if any are here who would like to address this topic.
Daniel Friend, Vice Chair of Neighborhood District Five, just wanted to reiterate that the neighborhood meeting that was held in regard to the original proposal for this project was met with approval from all who were present. We want to make sure that there are enough homes in Provo. We want to make sure that we have affordable housing and using the space in the backyard of a plot like this is something that would be very helpful and something that was met with approval from the neighbors, thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Any other comment? If not, we'll close public comment and bring this item back to the council for discussion. Councilmember McKay?
I had a question for the developer.
And please remind us of your name and city of residence.
Daniel Franco.
And where do you live?
Spanish Fork.
Okay, so we saw your plan, so you are planning on subdividing the land?
Correct.
Okay, and is your plan to build the basement out before it's sold, or to just do the first level with an unfinished basement and then sell it?
At this point, I don't know. It it's a possibility, but
Haven't decided yet?
You haven't.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like if you, because you, your plans, at least the ones you showed us
Right.
Were very much an ADU, and if someone wants the whole house, that's not ideal, that they have a full kitchen maybe or something. But, so if it is owner-occupied and they want an ADU, great. But someone may want the whole house for their family or need all that space for their family.
Correct, or, you know, leave it like an open plan for them to decide how they want it.
Totally, yeah.
So.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote on this implied motion. Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Whipple?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoban?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero. Finally, on the agenda, we have an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding building height and unit size regulations in the general downtown zone, that's DT one. With a citywide application, this will be presented by Planning Supervisor Erin Ardmore.
Hey, thank you, council. Um, so this one, we talked about in study session today, um came through to working on the language with the applicant uh and staff. Um, so just to cover kind of the the highlights of this, uh, building height currently allows a hundred feet in the downtown one zone. A downtown two zone is a hundred eighty feet. Uh, so as developers are looking within the downtown one zone, uh, they're looking for opportunities to maybe increase the height a little bit. And the idea from staff was to tie that to for sale product, which has been a known goal of the city council and of the administration. Uh, so what you have before you is a kind of an incremental uh increase in height uh relative to how much uh percentage of for sale housing they're providing on the project. Uh, so you can see that there in oh seven oh and then in oh nine oh. Uh, the there's some wording changes there, but the the substantial thing is to add the reduced minimum average uh unit size uh that currently is allowed along Center Street in this zone to also apply to University Avenue within the DT zone. Uh, to go from an average of eight hundred to six hundred to to create some more flexibility within these uh these high density projects. Uh, this was um from planning commission, they recommended approval on it. Um, they like the idea of gradually increasing it and then the city getting something back. Um, I think that's all I have. The applicant is also here if you have questions for him.
Thank you, Erin. Any questions for Erin? Counselor Bogdan.
Erin, did we get that changed? The owner occupancy required for the first year of ownership, is that sufficient for it to be reoccurring?
No, this is, this is the proposed language.
It's still the proposed language. So this is something that we would have to put in some kind of emotion to change.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Erin?
I just have a question.
Yes, also Christensen.
So is the um, so the implied motion is to adopt this?
I believe so.
Okay.
Any questions for the applicant? Counselor Bogdan, is, if the applicant is here, if he could come forward, please, thank you. Remind us of your name and city of residence.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Jeff Knighton. Uh, I reside in Mapleton. I grew up in Provo. And I have our architectural practices here on, in downtown Provo as well.
Thank you.
My question is, you start at ten to twenty percent for sale housing for up to a hundred and twenty feet. Why not start at twenty percent? Because you're getting an additional twenty percent in height, right?
Um, honestly, this was what was proposed after talking with Aaron and Bill about it. And we were good with it. We didn't discuss whether it would specifically be the twenty percent or the ten percent. So I'm not a, so we could discuss that, but this was just kind of, it was, it was presented to us. We didn't push for the ten to twenty.
It was just something that you guys come up with.
So we wanted, yeah, we, we proposed an increase in height um to to maybe a hundred and twenty feet, just thinking if you got a hundred and eighty in the DT two, that a hundred and twenty would give a little more flexibility. The, the reason being, there's certain construction types when you, when you um, so the reason a lot of buildings are, are seven stories is because you can do five stories of wood over two stories of what they call a podium. Once you go above that, you have your, a construction type changes. And so, and your construction cost per square foot goes up. So then there, you kind of jump up a few levels to get things back to where they pencil again from a just from a building planning standpoint. Anyway, so we were thinking maybe a hundred and twenty feet. Um, and, and then what was brought back to us was this proposal that was, hey, maybe this, and we thought this is a good idea, the gradient that, yeah, if you, if you offer ten to twenty percent for housing then, or for, for sale, then you get an increased hundred and twenty and, and kind of going up. But so we just thought it was a good idea as a way to accommodate, because we do want to provide, provide some for sale housing.
So what kind of for sale housing do you envision?
What do you mean?
Condos, townhomes, I mean, you got a whole block.
Condos, yeah, so condos. So, yeah, a little backstory on it is that there, we're exploring conceptual ideas of what to, you know, how to use the property. Um, the idea would be, so everything is still very loose, but the idea would be some for sale units that are on the ground um of a, of a taller building, but kind of those brownstone walkup, kind of maybe a two story townhome type of unit. It's on the ground level. Um, maybe some, and then maybe some condos, yeah, and some of, you know, going up vertically on other floors.
So you'd mix the apartments and the condos together in the same building?
Potentially, yeah.
And that, that works for you and your funding and?
That's the trickiest part. Um, it does, it does. Um, and that's the trickiest part about the owner occupied requirements. Um, as we've, I, I'll share this, we, you know, we, we heard some of that discussion uh with the planning commission. Um, and there's no, no opposition to that concept, right, and, and that goal. Um, and so in that meeting, I was like, yeah, I don't know that that's any problem. The talking to lenders, it does get stickier when you have uh requirements for owner occupied. Um, because sometimes uh, so I, I got educated on some of this. Uh, Chris Judd, who's the branch manager of Central Bank here in downtown Provo. Uh, he and I were on the uh planning commission vineyard together, known him for several years. So I went and talked to him and said, what's the implications on the lending side if we, you know, adopted, you know, to an ordinance like this? And there were concerns with, with, with lending um on some of those ratios. And so that's something we would have to work through, but the owner occupied requirement can sometimes make those lending issues even more difficult. And oftentimes FHA loans, backbones and stuff like that, that you would want for first time home buyers, which I think is part of a lot of the goal for owner occupied units. Um, they won't, you can't get those type of loans on certain um housing products where they don't meet certain ratios. And anyway, there's just, there's, it's a trickier world to pull off when you, when you involve the lending side of the equation. Uh, is what we've been learning, trying to explore this. So anyway, that's just some background on the discussions about it.
And just your guess estimate, because I realize you don't have your renderings or anything done yet. But what would be ten percent of your block? What would those numbers look like? Ten to twenty percent of your, your product?
So, uh, we're not looking at the entire block going to that height. Uh, we're looking at breaking up the block into more, not just one monolithic building, right? So we would have a couple of different buildings, maybe with some mid-block alleyways, trying to create some good urban design elements. So the portion of the project that initially we've looked at that would be up above the hundred and twenty feet or at a hundred and twenty feet that we would be looking at around that ten to twenty percent. Maybe, maybe a hundred percent of that building as well for sale. Um, but for sure, the ten to twenty, where we are looking at the kind of ground floor units like I was talking about.
What kind of a number can you just guess to me for me?
Sorry, which number, yeah, I, I.
What would be ten percent of that project? Would that be like?
Of the units?
Fifty units? Would that be ten units? Would that be five units?
I'm trying to remember the units that we had. Because again, we've, we've, we've looked at it multiple different iterations.
Because I have no idea what's going to fit into a hundred and twenty foot tall building, right? How many units you'd see?
Right, well, yeah, again, so it would be a portion of the block um on, for that building. I think that building had eighty units, but that's just totally guessing. I think what we're looking at for the entire block um, which we're looking at a diversity of different types of units. We're even exploring potential for senior housing um with maybe some assisted living as well. Um, so we're looking at like four hundred and fifty to five hundred units in the total block. But the portion that would be exceeding the height would be not, not the majority of that for sure.
So this, this proposal here is just ten to twenty percent of the units that are going to be in a building that exceed
that height.
A hundred feet.
Correct.
It's not your whole entire project. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the developer? Counselor Christensen?
So in terms of home, home ownership, we've had this discussion in the council um a couple of times. And we've talked about the um, the ownership being recorded first, owner occupancy for the first year recorded as part of the deed. So if I bought it, sold it to you, uh, you would have to, you know, reside in it for the first year. And then if you sold it to Aaron, he would have to, you know, that type of thing. Um, are you comfortable with that kind of language being put in here?
Well, I, I don't know that I am qualified enough. I've been learning about it um from the lending side. That's, that's the concern I would have is just that if that language then uh removes lending options, which are already difficult when there is for sale units. Um, but that can further reduce the options to get uh lending to do the project lending for selling those units. So there's layers to it that as an architect developer, I'm not that, that's why I went to talk to bankers. So what my encouragement would be because I think that the goal is, is the right goal. Um, it's a goal I share, it's a goal people I work with share. We want to provide more owner occupied for sale housing. Not just in Provo, but in a lot of communities around. The question is, are we creating the right, writing the right uh requirements and incentives or whatever that can actually deliver that? Because the, the concern I would have is if that gets added in, it, it may, you may not get any of it, right? Because then the lending becomes so difficult or creating those units and being able to sell those units, the lending options people have buying the units. Anyway, but I, I would just encourage, I, and what I talked to Aaron and uh, I think shared with Bill, you know, I when I talked to Chris, he, he would love to meet with the city, talk to the city, expand that conversation. He's in alignment. Again, we work together over at Vineyard and understand the, the desire, the need for cities to create more of those types of units. Um, I know there's efforts happening in the state legislature to try to create veteran incentives to provide condo projects and, which is a world of in, in our world, there's a lot of architects and engineers that just don't, they'll, they won't do a condo project because of the risk and the liability. Um, because attorneys make things fun. Um, so anyway, there's, there's a lot of rules to kind of try to help that get there, but whether or not that language is, is beneficial, I don't know that I can answer that.
So part of our responsibility is balance. And every developer who comes in would love to be just for rent. Uh, I get it. And we need, we need rental units, no question about that. And our sense is that, that we we can't just keep saying, well, because the funding, we let, let's let funders decide what the city turns out to be. Um, we're out of balance in terms of rental to homeownership. Homeownership is very important. Again, we're trying to balance both. That's part of the trade off that we have to make. Um, I, I wouldn't support uh this um unless there was that kind of meaningful homeownership put into the actual recorded deed. Otherwise, it's met for the first year or two, institutional investors come in and snatch, snatch it up. And um, and we take the American dream. We take homeownership away from the citizens of Provo. Um, because it's easier to finance rentals. So that's the trade off that we have to look at. So I, I would not be supportive without that kind of language.
Can, just to clarify, are we talking about requiring all of the for sale units to have the owner occupied requirement for one year?
That's correct.
That's what you're proposing.
Counselor McKay.
I'm with Craig. Um, we did, this discussion has come up, Rachel, with bankers. We talked to a bunch of developers, said the exact same thing, you are the FFA and everything. And I think, wasn't it not more than seventy percent could be, or is it?
Yeah. So if the lenders wanted to know that there was the opportunity to rent so that they would be sure to be able to get their mortgage payments. So the, the FHA backed loans, so these would be the, the instruments that people use to buy the individual units. And they don't want to make those loans to the homeowners unless there's a possibility that some of the ones in this block could be rented out in case of moving or relocation, job changes, because that's how they want to secure their monthly mortgage payments coming in.
Yeah, so these percentages shouldn't mess up that from what we've been told.
No, I think that the percentages that are, are defined here look like they would be okay with that. And the language that we've got about the homeowner occupancy, I think is likely sufficient. It doesn't include the deed restriction language in here. We're working on that. Um, but.
Yeah, but like Craig and I talked about, we'd like to add it. But I think with these percentages, he's fine with FAA loans.
Probably.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, the, the question. I, I will not add something to complicate it. Sorry, I'll stop.
Um, I do know that the state is working on issues too, as far as doing lending things and insurance things for owner occupancy units that are sold by developers, but obviously that's not done yet. But um I even think this is something that you can come to us down the road. Like if, if you can show us that, you know what, it's not working. I can't get my, you know, that's another thing. But um, I do think with these percentages, you'll be safe with your lending and, you know, it's, it'll be a feasible project.
Counselor Whipple.
So something that Brian had brought up um after our last meeting where we discussed these issues was how we enforce this, this not renting out for the first year. Brian, could you explain the, how that would actually work with the, the flip version of this language?
Sure, uh, that's a good, this is a good opportunity to talk to the entire council about that. We had a conversation about it in um, in leadership meeting. It's not a change in the actual concept, it's a change in how we talk about the concept. And, and as I said in leadership meeting, I'm not even necessarily asking the counselors to change how they talk about it in line with what I'm about to say. But I think it's how we as staff need to internally talk about it because it affects our enforcement. So the epiphany that I had based on actually some of the public comment in the last meeting when I was thinking through some of the questions about how we enforce is that from a legal standpoint, we really need to talk about rental prohibitions rather than owner occupancy requirements. Because what we're really doing is prohibiting them from renting the property for the first year. And that's something that we can enforce. It's a lot harder to, uh, it's conceptually, it's harder to force the owner to live there. Which is, you know, which is what it sounds like we're doing when we talk about owner occupancy, right? So when we talk about these um deed restrictions, as I was thinking about how we're going to formulate those deed restrictions, what I anticipate the deed restrictions actually saying is that for the first year after each change, change in owners in, in ownership, the property may not be rented. And then I'm going to propose here pretty shortly that we add some, some clarifying language to city code saying that we can't issue rental dwelling licenses to people if it would violate one of those deed restrictions. And then we can prosecute them for renting the property if they, if they do it. I, I think that's an enforcement scheme that works better than trying to take somebody over to court over whether or not the owner is living in the house or not. But it accomplishes the same thing in my view. But uh, we had talked about that in leadership, so now's a good opportunity to let everybody know about it. And again, I don't think that means you need to start talking about rental prohibitions instead of owner occupancy. It's kind of jargon and semantics. We're all on the same page about what it means, but so that you understand how the enforcement mechanism would work. That's what we've thought through.
And as far as the language that we have before us in this current proposal, where it says by means of a written agreement with the city for as for sale housing with individual owner occupancy required. In that written agreement, that's where we can put the deed restriction requirement. We don't have to add the deed restriction requirement into the city code here because the city doesn't have to accept that agreement without the conditions that we're imposing, right?
I think that is true. I would, for clarity, based on the discussion in the work session, I would suggest if, if it's the will of the council, that that's where we go, that we amend this language slightly so that it says with individual owner occupancy required for the first year of ownership for each owner. Um, or for the first year of ownership after each change in ownership in a, in a residential project. And that way we don't get in a fight later about something's already been rezoned and whether their right is vested or not. And, and I do think it makes sense to actually make that explicit in here.
So the only change that we would need to really add is first year of ownership after each change in ownership.
Correct. I think that gets us to where we want to be. And then, and then the agreements will reflect everything that I just talked about. Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. I'll look then for a uh, a substitute motion or a um, or I'll call for a vote unless there's a substitute.
I'll make a, a substitute.
I'll make a substitute motion. Well, and the motion that I'm making is that we will amend the proposed ordinance so that after the word ownership, we add the words after each change in ownership.
Yeah, I'd second that.
Motion by Counselor Whipple with a second by Counselor Christensen. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote then. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
That vote passes, that motion passes set by a vote of seven to zero. If there's no objection, then we'll now.
Sorry, Counselor Chair. Similar to the last item, that just changed the language. Now you need to vote on the implied motion.
Okay, thank you. Brian, so now we'll take a vote on the implied motion. I think we had public comment. That's right, thank you. Before we take a vote on the implied motion, I'll open the meeting to public comment.
We just got so caught up in it, Daniel.
Hey, I have one job and it's to report what happened in the neighborhood district meeting and by golly, I'm going to do it. So Daniel Friend, Vice Chair, District Five. Most of the questions from the attendees of the neighborhood district meeting were just wanting to know more details of the proposed project. Before we actually have a plan in place, it's hard for people to be opposed or in favor of. However, there were no direct comments in opposition to this proposed plan or this proposed change in the code. There were a few comments directly in support. Again, the residents of our district feel very acutely the lack of affordable housing and want to be a part of making sure that we have sufficient housing of many different types in our city. We're very encouraged by the idea of including not just students, but also seniors and people who are in other facets of life in this same project. We were encouraged by the discussions of good urban planning and landscaping that the developer shared with us in that meeting. Certainly, nobody wants the Bill Harris site to continue to be a vacant lot of concrete. And whatever the final proposal is, there will certainly be comments for and against various aspects of it. But for right now, the residents of District Five are looking forward to seeing something better put into that land than the nothing that is there right now. And we would like to see this move forward, not just for this project, but also for the potential of having other similar, well-designed urban renewal projects going along University Avenue. Because that's a big part of our district and we want to see it taken care of, much as Center Street has been taken care of. And we want to see it continue to grow in a sustainable, walkable, livable way. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Daniel.
Daniel?
So you mentioned it's important, you know, this type of project is important for, you know, because of affordable housing. You mentioned it a couple of times. There's nothing about this project that's affordable in terms of affordable housing. What's your connection to this project and how that would relate to affordable house?
Two ways. One, anything that increases the supply of housing is going to have a downward pressure on the general price of housing in Provo overall. If we increase supply of any type of housing, everything is going to have that downward pressure. Maybe not a lot. This is, you know, larger market economics that I'm talking about here at this point. But they are also talking about for this specific project, having a place for seniors to live, having a place for young married students to live. And those types of places generally have a lower cost for that demographic of resident than other places can have. Now, obviously, the devil is in the details. We don't know exactly what's going to be proposed in this project yet. But the fact that the developer is talking about having young married couples and having seniors living in the project shows in the minds of the neighborhood community that this is going to be more affordable than just luxury apartment high rises, to use a counter example. Does that answer your questions here?
Yeah, although I think it's very, very macro and it's like the discussion about trickle down economics. And when we talk about affordable housing, we are so far, so far from that. So I was just wondering if you were seeing something that I might be, that I might be missing. Because I think we're doing almost so little to, for actual affordable housing.
But we certainly want more of that as well. But as I said before, we definitely want something to be at the Bill Harris music site because right now there is no housing there, affordable or otherwise.
Yeah, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Yes, Counselor Handley?
Yeah, if I could just pick up on this conversation, I think, I'm, maybe there's a, I mean, there's often confusion between affordable housing and housing affordability. And, and I think, I mean, the way I interpret this project is, yeah, it doesn't have any sort of mechanism to reduce the price competitive to other similar kinds of housing types. But it is a housing type that we have a shortage of in the, in the, in the market. So it seems to me that it, it, it makes ownership affordable, even if, even if the, because if, if you're a young couple or an elderly couple and you're saying, I just want an apartment as opposed to a house, and you're looking at the difference between five, 400, 500,000 and eight or $900,000 or something like that, then that still very expensive, but at least, at least it starts to provide more variety of, of for sale products. I think that helps, helps the market anyway. But it is a different beast to say affordable housing. That's a whole different, a whole different species.
Thank you, Daniel, and thank you again for your help with the point of order.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? We'll close public comment then and bring the item back to a council for a vote on this implied motion. As amended, Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Thank you. If there is no objection, then we'll now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council by unanimous consent. Thank you all for joining us tonight.
Recording stopped.